Call this meeting to a word of the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Osling.
Here.
Osling here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman here. Johnson. Johnson absent. Fraustow. Fraustow absent. Thompson. Thompson absent. Johansson. Johansson absent. Hawley.
Here.
Hawley here. Pulos.
Here.
Pulos here. Viera.
Here.
Viera here. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato here. Rita.
Rita absent.
Donahue.
Here.
Donahue here. Carr.
Here.
Carr here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here. Nine present, your honor.
Thank you very much. The presentation of general proceedings and in a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of July 12, 2016. I get a motion by Alderman Slattery, second by Alderman Pulos. Any questions? Roll call.
Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Pittman. Pittman aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Keep forgetting to do the council.
Good evening. You are all welcome to this evening's meeting. As observers, we are politely reminded that the purpose of the meeting is for the deliberation of the city council and the mayor regarding city governance and business. If you intend to speak, please once recognized by the mayor approach podium, announce your name and address. Please be further advised comments may come in two, three minutes or forwarded to the appropriate city personnel for follow-up.
Thank you. Anyone? Come on up.
Hello. Rayanne Cantal Zelman, 12057 Artesian. Here to ask a couple things. One, I want to say there was a great job with the Santa Claus last year and it's almost that time. So we're going to do something different this year as we're allowed you pick your park and you pick the date. Last year, the park just put the park and they put everyone together. So this time, we're allowed you pick the park and you pick the date. So I have that to give you tonight so you can contact Josh Edwards or myself to let us know what date and what.
Can we have the same partners?
Pardon me?
Can we have the same partners?
If you want, that's it. You're good to pick. I don't want to micromanage. But you did, we did raise $1,456 last year, so we want to try to top that. So that's one thing I'm calling about. The next thing is the rec center's doing awesome, but we need help with pickleball. Now pickleball's awesome. Alderman Hawley was there and played. John Rita played. Joe Gaitrow played. We need you guys to come out and play. So I'm inviting you personally with a form here just so you can see what it is. Don't be scared. Tom did a great job, right?
It was fun. That's a round one.
So come on out. It's Monday nights, it's right now, it's Monday nights at 6:30. It's free and you just try it. Oh, yes, you guys aren't invited. So I'm going to give you these forms, the Santa Claus, the park, and the pickleball. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Going one? Going twice? Thank you. Let me move on to a little bit of a serious matter. And I'll start out this way. If I can call up our director of public health and safety, Mr. John Smith. As we all know, this past Sunday, we suffered a microburst. I'm going to give a little bit more information, but I'll hand it over to our director.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor asked me to update the council and our residents on last Sunday's storm and the resulting damage. According to the National Weather Service, our Sunday evening, on Sunday evening at approximately 7:30 PM, Blue Island suffered significant damage as a result of a strong microburst created from the core of a rapidly descending thunderstorm whose path covered a three-quarter mile radius. As a result of the storm, the city suffered hundreds of downed trees, a number of utility poles, as well as damage to several residential homes. Some flooding was also reported as a result of the overwhelming downpour of rain and simultaneous power outages to the residential sump pumps. Comment was notified and responded with work crews and service vans to assist residents that were without power. The city departments that responded were the fire department, the police department, our 911 center, municipal services, and our emergency management. Municipal services removed downed trees with crews that had been working around the clock beginning Sunday evening up until, as we speak right now, as some crews are still at work time. We had downed trees that blocked streets and alleys as well as the downed trees that pulled down some telephone and power lines. The Meadows Golf Course also suffered significant damage to numerous trees on the course and the Meadows sign out in front. Luckily, no damage to the clubhouse or other structures at the golf course. I have had no reports of any personal injuries resulting from this storm. We continue to clean up the damage and I would like to extend my appreciation to all our city departments with a special attention to Fire Chief Jim Klinker, our Public Works Superintendent Jim Polstrel, and his supervisor Melissa Fuller, EMA Chief Don Marchbanks, the entire 911 staff that was working that shift, as well as all of the police officers and firefighters who responded to our calls or service. I will also report that this morning, we had a debriefing with all our department heads and I've scheduled up a follow-up meeting for next week to specifically review our response on ways to improve future events should they occur in our city. Mayor, I couldn't be prouder of the men and women who participated in this event and worked tirelessly to ensure our residents were first and foremost safe, safe from injury. In addition, we appreciate the kind comments that were forwarded to us from many of the elected officials, so thank you. And if you have any questions, I will try my best to answer them for you.
Any from the Alderman? Go ahead, Alderman.
Did we set some sort of record for cleanup? I couldn't believe how fast everything was done and so well. Thank you very much.
They worked really hard. Thank you.
Any comments from the Alderman?
No, I just want to add my thanks. I was, I was on Sunday night and there was already trucks and crews and I saw fire trucks and everybody was out there.
The interesting thing about this storm was with the microburst, you don't get any warnings. There was no, and I verified this with the National Weather Service, we did not have a tornado watch in effect. We did not have a tornado warning in fact. And again, I know that sounded somewhat technical, but it's a result of the thunderstorm that whatever that was moving, the way it was moving and just, it's one of those unexpected, you're not sure where it would hit, so.
Unexpected phenomenon, correct. So the Alderman know, at that hour, I was driving back from Chicago and I got caught in it on 79th and Western. I migrate from my app here on my radar, the storm was heading out over the lake and all of a sudden, it changed directions and started heading south out of the lake and then made a L towards Western Avenue and started heading south. That's why, and I just shared our treasury here, at 7:45, I called dispatch and tell them, guess what? It's on its way. Get ready, hold on. Again, we didn't know the severity of it or how bad it was, just looked like a regular thunderstorm with the high winds, downpours, but now we know what the result was. But again, thank God, nobody lost a life, no major, major structural damage. Trees that were in our neighborhood for more than 60, 70 years, uprooted completely. But again, miraculously, that no fatalities in the city were.
And again, Mayor, if I may, I just, I think it bears repeating that we will be going over this myself with the Deputy Chief of Police and the Commander of 911 and the Fire Chief and EMA and Municipal Services and everybody to use it as a learning experience so that, God forbid, in the event of something even more serious, that we will be even better prepared to address some of the maybe inconsistencies that we encountered that evening, so.
Thank you very much again. Again, as the mayor of City of Blue Island, on behalf of the residents, I want to thank again Public Works, as you heard, still on the streets working. I was out with them as soon as I arrived back in Blue Island until around 1:00 in the morning. I left there and then they continued working all night to the present hour that they're still working out there. So we are kudos to them. Again, the Blue Island Homeland Security and Emergency Management Agency, the Blue Island Fire Department, Police Department, our 911 dispatchers, and the residents of Blue Island, they came out to assist, even if they had lanterns, they were assisting Public Works to light up because there was no light. We did have, you know, the truck out there, but they were assisting as best as they could, giving water, et cetera. So again, a community coming together in need and I love that. That shows how close we are as a community. Again, and we got to thank Tom and the night court. They were out here and they're still out here. So everybody working together again. Thank God, there nothing more serious than what happened. Neighbors helping neighbors. Let me move on to the next thing. I need a motion to appoint the following persons to the zoning board of appeals. I'll start out, I'll name them off. Jeff Adwell and Banda Hardy. Term expiring 4/30/17. Clifford Griffin and Joseph Martin. Term expiring 4/30/18. William Klein. Term expiring 4/30/19. Brandon Richardella. Term expiring 4/30/20. And Eric Fraustow. Term expiring 4/30/21. I need a motion by Alderman Tom Hawley, second by Alderman Rita. Any questions? Go ahead.
Could, if any of them here, could they come up and maybe introduce themselves and just give a short description of who they are?
I don't know if they're all here.
If there's any of them, if they made the effort to come up, just say. Come on up.
Hi, how's everybody doing? My name's Eric Fraustow, 134 36th and Street. I have been on the zoning board of appeals for several years now and I look forward to keep working. I'm a lifelong resident of Blue Island, brother to Alderman Fraustow, so I look forward to working with you.
Thank you for your service all these years.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brandon Richardella. I have been born and raised here in Blue Island and I thank you guys for the opportunity that you've given me to help serve my community even more now, so thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for that, sir.
My name is Banda Hardy. I've been on the zoning board for 15 years now. It's been a pleasure to serve Blue Island. I've been a resident since '58. My grandparents founded, was one of the founders in California Gardens, so I'm looking forward to continuing to help.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So we got a motion, we have a second. Roll call. Any questions?
Yeah.
Nobody else? Roll call.
Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council. Moving on to point number two. A motion to appoint the following persons for the civil service commission. Mr. John Rauch. Term expiring 4/30/17. Ron Murray. Term expiring 4/30/18. And Roland Libby. Term expiring 4/30/19. Need a motion by Alderman Pittman, second by Alderman Osling. Any questions? No? Anybody in the audience? Present? Roll call, please.
Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. A reminder, the Blue Cap fundraiser bucket of balls is on Sunday, July the 31st, starting, are you ready? 5:30 AM. Until 9:00 PM, July 31st, for Blue Cap fundraiser. Again, this is a big thing for us. Next Tuesday, City of Blue Island is hosting National Night Out at the John D. Reeder Recreation Center on August 2nd, 2016, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Again, it's a big, big community event. We expect a lot of people and we expect all of you, both who are present here and who are watching us on TV, to be present again. National Night Out at the John D. Reeder Rec Center on August 2nd, 2016, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Request everybody to show up. This coming Friday, after 73 years, Private First Class Charles E. Etching, United States Marine Corps, will be returned to his homeland. In 1943, while Charles was in senior year at the Blue Island Community High School, the country was at war. He left school and he joined the Marine Corps prior to his graduation that year. Charles, Private Charles E. Etching, was first sent to California and then to the Pacific Theater. His unit participated in the invasion of Tarawa. The Battle of Tarawa was fought from November the 20th to November the 23rd, 1943. Although the Marines were successful in this battle, 1,200 Marines and Navy corpsmen lost their lives, including Charles. History Flight Inc., headed by Mr. Mark Noah, is an Atlanta-based nonprofit dedicated to locating and retrieving the remains of American servicemen members missing in action or buried on foreign soil. This past spring, Mr. Kent Oaching was notified that Charles dog tags scraps of his uniform and remains had been recovered in May of 2015, Epetio Island, Tarawa Atoa, and Republic of Kirabati. The Etching family is asking the Illinois Patriot Guard to honor this great American hero in all his aspects of his final journey home. Get a little bit emotional here because this is what we've been doing as mayor, the POW flag, EMI flag, we're bringing one of our own home. Think about it. Please join us as we render a long overdue final salute to honor his service to his country. He arrives, get this, Delta Flight Information departs Honolulu flight on July 28th at 3:43 PM local. From there, he arrives in Atlanta at 6:30 AM local. He departs Atlanta at 8:40 local and arrives at Chicago O'Hare International Airport on July the 29th, 9:42 AM via Delta Flight Number DL 2183. From there, from the O'Hare International Delta Area Airlines Logistics Center, they're saying there's going to be, probably leaving that location around 9:45, 10:45. We expect him to arrive probably in Blue Island between 10:00 and 11:00, 10, I mean, 11:00 and 12:00. My plea to all of you, to the residents out there, bring your American flags, love, welcome him home. The route is probably going to be 294 to 127, 127 to Greenwood to Krieger Funeral Home. There isn't going to be, there is going to be a memorial service the following day on Saturday. My pledge to you, my request to you, is that we line Greenwood Avenue and the streets of Blue Island when he arrives in Blue Island. Again, we don't know the exact time, but given we have the use of smartphones, we can call or, you know, if we call City Hall, we'll try and relay that information out to the public as quickly as we can. But immediately after the escort, he's going to Krieger Funeral Home, full military and Patriot Guard Honor Berry on Saturday, July the 30th. Staging on that day will be, I think, at 8:30 in the morning and he's going to be laid to rest at the First Evangelical Lutheran Cemetery located at 4231 West 127th Street and Elsith, exactly 10. So whoever wants to get more information, please call my office, call your office, City Hall, the mayor's office, and we'll try to get you that information. Again, I'm requesting that we all go out there and welcome this man home. Any bids, city clerk?
No, no bids, your honor.
City clerk's office?
Yes, I need a motion to approve or request from the Blue Island firefighters to hold a makeup rain day, build a boot, tag day, which must be a district on August 26th at the intersection of 120 South and Cadiz, 127th and Western, under line Western.
I have a motion by Alderman Carr, second by Alderman Hawley. Any questions? Roll call.
Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, I need a motion to approve or request from St. Benedict Catholic Church to hold their St. Benedict Fest on Saturday, September 17th from 2:00 PM until 11:00 PM. Street closing would be at 8:00 AM for the setup.
I have a motion by Alderman Viera, second by Alderman Pulos. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you. Anything else?
That will be it.
Mr. City Treasurer, any report?
I don't know, your honor.
Thank you. City Attorney? Committee reports, committee development committee?
Yes, your honor, the committee development committee met on June 15th. The meeting was called order at 7:07 with Alderman Hawley, Bellato, Osling, Pittman, and Johansson present, absent were Alderman Rita, Carr, and Fraustow. Also present were Jason Berry, Sean Terry, Director Rita, Treasurer Bellato, and Citizen Alan Stevo. Under public comment, Mr. Stevo asked about changes to the enterprise zone. Mr. Berry related that the state did reauthorize and expand the enterprise zones, but they made changes, making it no longer applicable to residential rental properties. Under old business, a motion was made by Alderman Osling and second by Alderman Pittman to approve the minutes from the April 11th meeting. All were in favor, motion passed. Under new business, Director Rita gave an update on the rec center. The Park District entered into an intergovernmental agreement so that they may run programs down there. They have already started planning activities and one of the day camps is already down there during the day from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. They are looking for additional programming for the rest of the summer. Their book comes out in August for the fall and they are looking at using the rec center and programming events down there. Director Huff is working on getting the splash pad working. It's been fixed and is working and their kids down there, we were down there last night and they're down there using it. They are working with the city IT people and Marshall Electric to get computers installed and working. Furniture has been ordered. The police department is in the process of hiring a couple of part-time clerks that will occupy the office down there. Director Rita's intent is to have someone from the police department down there every day. They are in the process of getting in touch with District 130 Superintendent Dr. Gollan to see about them using the facility for after-school programs and/or tutoring. They are setting up another registration process for people using it and are looking into using school IDs for the kids once school starts. There were issues with some of the open gym times, so they backed down from that. The youth have been great and they are using it on a daily basis. Things are moving forward now very quickly. There's still a ways to go, but the Park District is very enthused about being down there. They will have priority with the center after they have scheduled. Mr. Jackson will fill in the other events. Applications are coming in for various uses. A committee of city and Park District officials will be put together to evaluate all the applications and as they move into the fall, there will be more and more activity down there. Things are moving smoothly and it's appearing to be a good example of government entities working well together to benefit all of the residents of the city. Jason Berry presented the building and planning report for May 2016. Revenues for the month were $45,029.25. Total revenues for the period ended May 2016 was $283,961.58. The number of permits issued are about 50 more than last year at the same time. They are being more aggressive with penalties for starting work without a permit. Last year, there were 10. This year, there are over 270. We are even with intent to sell. Residential inspections continue to be aggressive. They are up. Last year, we had 780 and this year, we're up over 1,000. Sean Terry presented his business license report. Approved business licenses include Metro PCS, 12606 Western Avenue Suite A, a mobile phone retail establishment, open seven days a week, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. They employ two full-time employees and two part-time employees. Ron Staffing Services, 12822 Western, is a full-service staffing agency. Their service model is focused on fulfilling open job positions for companies in Blue Island and the surrounding suburbs. They have two existing offices in Chicago and offices in suburbs, including Elgin, Addison, Summit, Chicago Heights, Bolingbrook, and Joliet. They will be open six days a week, Monday through Saturday, 5:00 AM to 6:00 PM and employ two full-time employees. There were a number of new business applicants that are going through the process. He also provided an update on business updates and code enforcement issues. They're working on, working with business owners to screen their dumpsters. This will help keep the alleys cleaner. Jason Berry reported that the collections for the month for the business district was the second highest, coming in at 50, just over $51,000, bringing the total collected so far to $565,223. They are getting far with the design work on Hitchcock. They basically have final draft street skate designs. They will be brought to the ADHOC Business Committee and then it was brought to the ADHOC Business Committee, which included Dave Brown from Rock Island Public House, Eric
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
And then, motion for July 20th, 2016, for preapproval of accounts payable in the amount of $612,718.46.
I have a motion, second by Alderman Osling. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.